Got it.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. The council meeting November first, two thousand and twenty-two is called to order. If anyone attending the meeting here in the council chambers would like to borrow some amplifying headphones, please let us know. And we'll do the pledge of allegiance and I'll leave. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Republic of the British Empire. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Donna, will you do a roll call, please?
I will. Council member Bode.
Here.
Council member Sherman.
Here.
Council member Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Council member McDowell is absent this evening. We have council member Peterson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? Or the city manager? All right. Do we have any counsel?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Could we have a motion to excuse the absence of council member McDowell?
Have a motion.
I move to excuse council member Catherine McDowell from this evening's meeting.
Second.
Hey, there's a motion and second to excuse council member McDowell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Does the council have any board reports to share? All right. Council member Peterson.
Hold this up here. So on October twenty-first, I attended the PRTPO meeting, which is Peninsula Regional Transportation Project Organization Meeting Executive Board. And we do have Ken Gil from our staff on the Technical Advisory Committee as well. And at the executive board, we discussed a number of things, including the regional transportation plan, which was approved for twenty-three to twenty-eight. Um, a new human services transportation plan and new mapping features on that website. Um, we also spent quite a bit of time discussing the consolidated grants process, um, which applications have already been sent into WashDOT and then PRTPO will weigh in on what fits best with the regional plans. Um, and rank those and submitting back to WashDOT. So those were a few of the things we discussed at the meeting. Bless you. There's also, um, been some conversation about electrification and transport system, transportation systems grants. Um, and Squawson Island Tribe is working on that in partnership with Skokomish Tribe, Mason Transit, Mason County, and Port of Allen. Along with PewDiePie's one and three. So there may be some opportunities for the city to get involved, um, if that is appropriate. And so, um, those are all things we're looking at before the next meeting in December.
Thank you. Are there any reports or comments? All right. Has everyone reviewed the items in the consent agenda? All right, we have a motion to approve an agenda as published.
Some room.
Second. All right, we have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. So tonight we have some presentations and we're going to skip our first one because they are not here yet. So we're going to move to, or, um, Kenya Fraser, she's going to present for the Shelton Mason County Chamber Third Quarter LTAC Report Lodging Tax Advisory Committee.
Hello. Thanks for having me. My name is Tanya Fraser and I am the current chair of the Shelton Mason County Chamber of Commerce. Oh, I have the clicker.
We can take it away if you'd like.
Probably should. Okay, um, the total number of visitors served in Q three of two thousand and twenty-two has increased by twenty-two point seven percent compared to the same period last year, which is an increase of over ten percent from the same period in two thousand and nineteen, which would be pre-pandemic. Phone calls during Q three increased over the two thousand and twenty-one count and have been on an upward trend. The quantity of maps and recreational passes increased substantially in two thousand and twenty-one and met or exceeded pandemic sales, pre-pandemic sales. Memorabilia has proven to be very popular, which was added in June of two thousand and twenty-one. In Q three, nearly four hundred retail items were sold, which included things like t-shirts, backpacks, pens, fun stuff like that. Uh, Chamber of Commerce page on Facebook, um, contains, continues to be effective way to share relevant business news, community happenings, points of interest, and information hot topics. Um, it shows the total of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand reached. Um, the Hood Canal Visitor Center page shares tourism-related topics daily, including suggestions on things to do within the community, including the Hood Canal Region, City of Shelton, Mason County, Washington State Parks, Hood Canal, and Olympic National Forest. This also shows that the Google page has an uptick as well as the installation of the buzzer system in the caboose, which means that visitors can hit the little button and they can be opened and let in from the chamber office now. Ta-da. All in all, people are using the site. So yeah.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya.
All right, our next presentation is a proclamation for Operation Green Light. And I will read the proclamation. Whereas residents of the city of Shelton have great respect and admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served in our country and our, and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifice of men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining their freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas the city of Shelton seeks to honor these individuals who paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, Veterans of Foreign Wars, Religious and Civil Service Groups. And whereas approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated twenty percent increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that forty-four dash seventy-two percent of service members experiencing high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active, active military service members transitioning from military service are high risk of suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the city of Shelton appreciates the sacrifice of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted, therefore be it resolved with designation of green light for veterans. The city of Shelton hereby declares November seventh through the eleventh as time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Therefore, be it further resolved that observance of Operation Green Light, the city of Shelton encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made the immeasurable sacrifice to prevent freedom by displaying a green light in the window of their place of business or residence. I will be signing this today. Right. So, and we still don't have. So we will remove from our agenda item D, the Mason County Historical Society Museum's Third Quarter LTAC Report.
And move it to, uh, the November fifteenth meeting, uh, and we'll reschedule that for our next meeting.
Move it to the November fifteenth meeting. Need a motion for that?
Okay.
So that's your presentations. All right, it is now time for members of the public are invited to make public comment on any topic that is not listed on the agenda. Donna, do we have anybody interested in making public comments tonight?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. We have Dean Jewett, but Dean, you signed up on SMPD, but I assume you wanted to talk now. Is that right? Sorry. And then, Mr. Mayor, we also have, um, some via Zoom as well.
So Dean Jewett, lifetime, lifetime Mason County member, uh, appreciate the ability to be here. I wanted to go over and kind of state some codes and some ordinances that everybody has accessibility to, super easy to find. I know we have a study session coming up real soon, uh, at the request of one of the council people here. Uh, we have a code eight point seven four, uh, that deals with public camping. We have code eight point three two that states about open burning. We've got eight point two four that discusses littering. We've got eight point six eight that talks about some park regulations. Uh, we have an eight point seven zero that talks about nuisances. We've got a whole Title Nine that deals with a lot of these things. I would implore you all, if you haven't looked through these, to open them up. Take a look, familiarize yourself with what you're going to be discussing at this next, uh, study session. Be informed. I've got to ask Jeff, our city manager, who is very diligent and thorough on finding information on the internet. That's, that's useful information. And I applaud him for that. I would implore you to please find that and get that information out so that you guys cannot just come into the study session blind without understanding what's happening and what's going on in our community. And I know you're not. Because I obviously am, am starting to send emails and pictures, which I'll continue to for your benefit. Uh, whether you reply or not, Jeff, I applaud you for, uh, replying. I appreciate it. Uh, there's a, I'm going to give you my, uh, my citizen board report, just like you guys do. Uh, some of the things that I've noticed and some of the things that I've done just recently. I was able to clear a camp up by Happy Teriyaki and the McDonald's. Uh, I'll be going there tomorrow or the next day to clear another one. These are our blights in our community, their environmental concerns. Uh, they, uh, I took a whole pickup truck up, uh, load up to the dump. So I've also, uh, rescued several more shopping carts, uh, and identified several more. Uh, I'm not sure if you guys have seen it, but Aberdeen has passed an ordinance and one of their stores has put the locks on their cart systems. So I'm not sure, did any of members of, of council or the city manager have conversations with these stores? You know, we have a shopping cart ordinance in, uh, federal way. That's, uh, that's a good ordinance. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. Let's take what's working in some of these other communities and use them. Right now, I think there's probably six or eight homeless carts just running around town right now. How do you think the garbage gets transported all over town? With these carts. So let's open up. Let's do something about it. You guys have the ability. You guys are the dog. Do not let the tail wag the dog. You guys set the policies. You guys have those conversations. You guys have that ability. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, we have Athena Ayers via Zoom.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to be here via Zoom this evening. Um, I wanted to be there in person. Uh, this was just a little bit more convenient for me today. I also have some super, uh, useful and helpful information I found on the internet. Um, also very easy to find. Um, I would like to speak directly towards our housing crisis in the city of Shelton, uh, Mason County as a whole, uh, generally speaking. Um, some of the information that I have here today, uh, dates back to a decade ago. Um, starting with the poverty task force report, um, that was sent out at the beginning of our homelessness task force, um, meeting. A lot of the recommendations in this report from a decade ago or almost a decade ago. Um, talk about things, and I'm paraphrasing for the sake of time, but talk about things like increasing access to housing and, um, public bathrooms and, uh, updated website on the city page. A lot of the same things that we talked about in the homelessness task force. I also have the five-year housing and homeless strategy, uh, for Mason County developed by the Mason County Housing Coalition. Um, also talking about, um, goal number three was to increase and maintain the supply and access to affordable housing. We don't have any, um, affordable housing, um, or at least new developments of affordable housing in the city of Shelton. Um, I also have the housing and homelessness in Mason County Executive Summary from two thousand and sixteen and seventeen. Um, highlighting the need for additional housing, talking about how thirty-five percent of Mason County's residents cannot afford a monthly housing cost at the fair market rent for a two-bedroom unit at nine hundred and thirty-five dollars per month. This was again, two thousand and sixteen, seventeen. And then I have every housing and behavioral health advisory board annual report from twenty eighteen to, uh, two thousand and twenty-one. The two thousand and eighteen report acknowledges, and I'm quoting some of this, acknowledges the complexity of the action needed to end homelessness and will work in coordination with other planning efforts in the city and county to address the issue of affordable housing and homelessness. This same paragraph is then copied and pasted in the two thousand and twenty report. And so I can't help but to feel like we're having the same meetings over and over again with no outcome. And at what point does it become negligence? We're talking about a decade of reports, a decade of meetings, a decade of information, and still no additional housing. While hundreds of people, including children, families, elderly population, people with disabilities are sleeping outside or in places not meant for habitation. And yet we have a decade of reports to, to indicate that we need more housing. We need to do something about this, and that is also your responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all for now, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We're recessing from a regular meeting to open a public hearing. Finance Director Mike Giddens has information regarding two thousand and twenty-three preliminary budget.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. The budget presented this evening for the council and public's consideration is the result of many city staff members' hard work. Um, department staff, directors, and the finance staff all contribute to this effort. And I thank everyone for their diligent work to develop a budget that works to continue to provide the full range of municipal services to our citizens. Everyone involved sharpened their pencils to make certain that what we're presenting to you and our citizens is making the most of limited dollars and any increases are being applied strategically. With that in mind, the budget is developed concentrating on city council's strategic goals of clearly define the future, community safety, and engage the community. A few highlights from the budget. But I can't find, is the clicker here?
You're on the table.
Three, eight, four, ball.
Well, we're not.
That's the worst that happens. All right, so the lengthy document that is presented, I'm going to start with a highlight. It begins with a letter to you as council and our citizens from city manager Knighton. The letter serves to highlight the challenging environment we're living in today with month-over-month high inflation and increased demand on city services with little revenue growth. It highlights that the budget continues to support the many core services our community relies upon such as clean drinking water, public safety, parks, outdoor spaces, communications, planning, maintenance of facilities, and it prioritizes the long-term investment of asset replacement and preservation. The city's highest priority is public safety, and to that end, we are pleased to have a continued partnership with the Shelton School District to place the school resource officer in Shelton Schools. Exhibit A of the budget document, um, shows the, um, expenditures citywide. There's no general fund staffing increase in the two thousand and twenty-three budget. The general fund maintains current levels of staffing. The city's budget philosophy is to develop realistic revenues for the upcoming year and fit expenses within those um, revenue estimates. Exhibit B shows all of the funds that the city utilizes and the, um, proposed beginning and ending fund, um, balances. This page of the budget document is a general fund summary. It shows the general fund sources and expenditures by department. The general fund accounts for much of the day-to-day operations of city functions, including public safety. This shows that the city is living within its means to provide for these operations. Council's goal under community safety of code enforcement activities is added with a community and economic, economic development section of the budget to show this focus. Parks, recreation, and facilities that this, um, is now separate. Police officer staffing remains the same in this new budget. The reduction in FTE from the police department is the move of two code enforcement off employees to the community economic development department. All other staffing remains the same at the police department with budget we believe to be sufficient to provide for the safety of our community. This speaks to council's goal to ensure public safety services are funded and staffed appropriately. To the goal of community safety, city manager Knighton and police chief Beeson continue to work on jail agreements that will give our police officers more options with better jail capacity. To this end, when you approve the final budget, there will be an amount built in that will draw from the reserve if needed to fund expanded jail services. We don't know what this will look like or to what extent we might need to utilize this capacity, but knowing that this is a council goal and that we will better, better serve our overall community, we've built it into the budget. We will communicate with you regularly as the year commences so that you know exactly what's happening, both with the contracts for jail services and where our spending goes. We realize this is not a long-term solution to the city's ability to fund jail services, but it is a step that city leadership feels needs to be taken. This slide shows the proposed revenue budget. The overall decrease in revenue is due to the lapse of ARPA funding. Um, and I wanted to point that out on this page of the budget. I called out this slide to draw attention to the street fund. The general fund is continuing to support the street fund in two thousand and twenty-three, and I point this out because the street, the street fund provides vital services, but the support from the general fund continues to weigh heavily on other general fund uses. The street fund has large responsibilities for the administration and maintenance of our streets. I'll point out all the functions of this fund that you'll see listed here from snow and ice control to street cleaning to street lighting and maintenance. This slide, um, summarizes, um, our capital resources related to the transportation benefit district. The fund was created back in two thousand and nineteen through council action to account for special revenues. And to summarize what will be occurring through this fund, I share this slide. You can see the proposed budget highlights to fund in part the projects listed there. This illustrates examples of the many projects and hard work that will be undertaken in two thousand and twenty-three. And to highlight a couple of other, um, things here from the transportation impact fee, this represents another of the special revenue funds created in two thousand and nineteen and shows the transfer out to pay in part for intersection signal upgrades. This is something important to citizens and it is included in the two thousand and twenty-three budget. This is a highlight of the water capital fund. This fund shows where the city accounts for water capital projects. Potential funding includes state and federal grants, some debt financing as well as transfers into the fund. We're pleased to be continuing the automated meter infrastructure project and the other projects listed to keep our water supply and services as up-to-date as possible within our means. The sewer capital fund is similar to the water capital fund in its organization. The sewer capital fund allows the city to track resources to, to ensure that we cover the cost of each project and to ensure that total project expenses don't exceed budget authority. You can see the highlight of projects that Public Works has carefully planned to keep our sewer infrastructure maintained. The equipment maintenance and rental fund can be a little bit elusive, and so I wanted to highlight that this is an internal service fund. And it's used to account for the maintenance of most of the city vehicles and equipment. Since this is part of council's strategic goals to manage the full lifecycle of community assets, I want to illustrate what will be occurring in two thousand and twenty-three in part through this fund. The budget document itself is eighty-four pages and represents a great deal of work and projects to be undertaken in two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Actually, do we, anybody sign a public testimony, Donna?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
All right, maybe we have a reading of ordinance number one nine nine one dash zero nine two two.
Ordinance number one nine nine one dash zero nine two two. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, adopting the budget for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-three.
Right. We have any comments or questions?
Yes, comment. Uh, thanks again to staff and city manager, um, director, uh, Giddens as well for preparing the budget and, uh, preparing us to move into two thousand and twenty-three. I commend your efforts again for doing that. Um, I do, I do come at this again from a little bit of concern. Uh, the last five budgets that we ratified um, have all included, uh, no new programs, no additional staffing, no new revenue sources. I'm a firm believer that a budget is a good communication tool, helps us communicate what's important to us. This year, we're communicating to the public, what's important is public safety. So, so important that we're going to be drawing from our strategic reserve that we worked hard to create. Uh, from a, you know, from a financial standpoint, we were, we were pretty adamant, uh, coming in as a new council in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, that we do a better job of putting, putting money in the bank, uh, so to speak, to be prepared for those days where, where we're going to need it the most. Um, I'm just fearful that the one-time budget balancing acts that we do every year is going to come to an empirical cliff here soon. And, um, I'm just hopeful that in two thousand and twenty-three, we'll spend some time working on this so we get, uh, some lasting sustainability in our budget moving forward. So, again, thank you for your time in preparing this, but two thousand and twenty-three, there's going to be a lot of work to do, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, real quick, um, I want to mention a couple of things. We don't have any new positions creating in the general fund. Uh, but we do have one position that is funded across the utilities funds for that GIS, uh, analyst to make sure that we maintain and preserve our assets, as is one of your goals. We wanted to make sure we, we hit that goal for sure because it saves money down the road. Um, uh, take care of it now and, uh, you'll save money and you don't have to replace the whole thing later. Uh, the second, um, uh, part of that is, I was going to mention this toward the end of manager's report, but I think it makes sense now. Uh, the city is looking to create a financial sustainability task force, similar to what the homelessness task force uh, pursued as part of the homelessness, um, response is to provide the council with recommendations about how we might create and maintain a financially stable budget moving forward. Very difficult in Washington State, uh, because of the way our taxing structures work. Uh, but we would like people outside to come take a look at this and tell us, you know, what their priorities are, uh, how we might be more sustainable moving into the future. And I would like to convene that task force in, uh, very early in two thousand and twenty-three so that we might have council consideration of those recommendations from the task force as we begin to develop the two thousand and twenty-four budget. Um, the two thousand and twenty-four budget, as you all know, we've provided the financial forecast for the last for about four years now. And two thousand and twenty-four is always the year, has always been the year. Uh, we're actually, at first we thought it might be two thousand and twenty-three, but we were able to stretch our resources as far as we could. But two thousand and twenty-four has, uh, always been the year where we're looking at, um, uh, significant changes on how we operate, uh, city services and how we provide those services to the citizens. So just wanted to mention that there'll be more information coming from us soon about that and how people can participate. Um, and thank you, I just wanted to, I wanted to get that out there.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Do we do a motion? We did? No. Okay.
I move that we forward ordinance number one nine nine one dash zero nine two two to the November fifteenth action agenda for further consideration.
Second. We have a motion and a second to forward ordinance number one nine nine one dash zero nine two two to the November fifteenth action agenda for, for the consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I post. Motion carries. This public hearing is closed and we're open. And we're opening another public hearing. We have another item from Director Giddens. He has information about two thousand and twenty-three regular ad valorem taxes.
Thank you. As part of the budget-based system of property taxation in our state, we bring this ordinance to you for consideration this evening. The city has determined the amount needed to partially fund the budget, and we present you with the levy this evening. The ad valorem tax ordinance confirms the city's partial reliance on par, property taxes as a general revenue funding source. This is the total amount to be collected from property. This is the total amount to be collected from property owners within city limits. This includes the regular property tax and EMS levy for property tax collection in twenty twenty-three.
Right. Has anyone signed a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Then we have a reading of ordinance number one nine nine two dash zero nine two two.
Ordinance number, excuse me, ordinance number one nine nine two dash zero nine two two. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, setting the amount of the annual ad valorem taxes in the city of Shelton for calendar year twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I move that we forward ordinance number one nine nine two dash zero nine two two to the November fifteen council meeting for next scheduled public hearing for further consideration and action. Public opportunity heard under ordinance under consideration.
Second. All right. Comments or questions? All right, we have a motion and a second to forward ordinance number one nine nine two dash zero nine two two to the November fifteenth council meeting for the next scheduled public hearing for further consideration and action and to allow the public another opportunity to be heard on the ordinance under consideration. All in favor say aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries. This public hearing is closed. Public Works Administration Manager Brooke Kilters information for us about construction contract award for the C Street landfill cleanup.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. Um, so tonight I'm bringing forth information about the um C Street landfill construction contract award. Um, in your packet is preliminary information because I didn't have it at the time that I was writing the briefing. Um, I'll be bringing forth the uh bid tabulation for you at the next meeting. Um, but your attached invitation to bid explains the project that was distributed through um the month of October. We did open bids October twenty-sixth. And we were really excited. We received ten bids. And the low bid was with Brumfield Construction for the cost of one million three hundred and ninety thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventeen cents. So that was significantly lower than we were anticipating. Um, and although it looks like we are going to have some budget remaining, we do have an obligation um due mandate with Department of Ecology to um continue operation maintenance and monitoring plans for the five years following construction. So we're going to hold on to some of that money until then.
Thank you, Donna. Do anybody interested in public comment?
No public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, do we have a motion?
I moved forward this item with the addition of the awarding resolution to the November fifteenth council meeting for further consideration.
So sure.
Yep, I didn't even, or council one for sure. All right, comments or questions? Long time, long time coming. Thank you for all the hard work, everybody. Um, working on this project. All right. We have a motion and a second to forward this item to the action agenda for the council meeting November fifteenth. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Right. City Engineer Ken Gill has information for us about stormwater regulation.
Good evening, council. Hope you had a great Halloween. Uh, this is a continuation of of the Kenny Oberg's efforts on the eighteenth. So I'm gonna sit down real quick and let him finish this topic.
Evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. Um, to follow up with some questions that came up on the last presentation of this. Um, Councilmember Schmidt was concerned about the city's ultimate liability with long-lasting or long uh long-going out-of-compliance sites in terms of the business source control infection program. I have reached out to our permit coordinator through Ecology. Unfortunately, she has been out of the office and has not yet got back to me. So when she does, I will let you all know exactly what comes out of that. Uh, Councilmember Peterson, I look forward to working with you to set up a presentation for the uh Chamber of Government Affairs Committee. Just sent an email today, so we'll, we'll work something out. And no changes since last presentation have been made. And I recommend this ordinance uh be adopted as presented.
Thank you. Donna, anybody sign up for public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
May we have a reading of ordinance number one nine nine three dash zero nine two two?
Ordinance number one nine nine three dash zero nine two two. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, amending chapter thirteen point zero two of the Shelton Municipal Code related to stormwater regulation.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number one nine nine three dash zero nine two two as presented.
Second.
All right, com- comments or questions? Appreciate the follow-up. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number one nine nine three dash zero nine two two as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. We are getting through this way faster than I thought.
It's just, just gonna say, I uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, it's time for a manager's report?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I was gonna say, I didn't think we'd be over until about twenty after seven, so I got a whole bunch of things to say. But uh, actually, just a couple of things. Thank you for the proclamation earlier this evening for Operation Green Light. Uh, we will be lighting up the Civic Center uh that week, starting next Monday on November seventh through Veterans Day at the end of the week uh to to honor our veterans. I did want to mention a couple other things. Uh, first, the event on Friday, the Spooktacular event downtown was packed and the weather was great. It was a lot of fun. I had a good time dodging all the kids running around looking for candy. So that was, that was great. Um, we did host Senator Cantwell and Representative Kilmer uh on Friday to discuss opportunities for recompete legislation, which is targeted for communities such as ours that will allow us to uh uh create job opportunities in areas that are a little bit less expensive for companies to relocate to and provide jobs to the community, but we need the infrastructure to be able to do that, specifically water and sewer. Uh, actually, in our case, sewer, uh where we're looking at sanitary sewer services. So we appreciate the opportunity uh to talk to them about those fut- future opportunities that we could have here. It's a very potential, very uh good potential to happen here. Uh, already mentioned the financial task force uh in the last item. If I could just have head nods from council, we had uh council member Bode that was the designate need to the opiates uh stakeholder group, I believe is the name of it, and council member McDowell is the alternate. And uh, uh, council member Bode has asked uh that we could switch those and uh council member McDowell has agreed. So she would become the primary and council member Bode would become the alternate. If that's fine with uh council, we're going to be selecting all these boards again in a couple of months in January, but uh for the time being, I just wanted to make that switch. Okay. Uh, and lastly, let's see, looking ahead, on Friday coming up, uh you will have your joint meeting with the Board of County Commissioners. And uh we'll meet on Friday morning and discuss several topics that uh we've all provided the agenda for. Public safety being a big one, as we talked about tonight with your twenty twenty-three budget. Uh, and then on the eighth, you'll have an exciting, extremely exciting study session talking about land use regulations. It just did. Gets me all giddy. You guys are gonna have a great time. Uh, and then on the fifteenth, of course, we'll be doing a similar meeting to this one with the Shelton Metropolitan Parks District uh adoption of their budget uh or consideration of adoption of their budget along with consideration for adoption of the city's budget uh and several other items, including a uh the Civic Center rotating art gallery uh that will be coming up on your next meeting. And I did want to mention now, and we'll continue to mention December twenty-seventh is the study set, is the day scheduled for a study session. We'll go ahead and uh ask if it's you're comfortable with canceling that study session uh tonight, and if anybody, everybody's comfortable with that a couple of days after the holiday. We are also likely to cancel the council meeting on December twentieth and immediately before the Christmas holiday. Uh, but I don't want to formally cancel that until unless we have an emergency where council meets to get together to meet, but that, that is something that's been past practice that we do just about every year. So uh we will likely uh do that again, but we'll hold it open for now just in case. Um, and with that, that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
How much of questions for city manager? Council having new items, but oh, sorry.
I was gonna mention, it looks like it may snow next week. Um, and uh
Somebody informed me.
It might be good luck if we put a snowplow on something just to prevent that from happening, but just to ask to remind, help us remind the public of priority plow routes and every winter preparedness type items would be helpful.
Yep. Uh, we've done it. We were talking about that earlier today uh in regards to the budget because as soon as we put the de-icer down and it rains and washes all that away, our road supervisor, uh Mr. Alba gets a tear in his eye. But uh we are planning for that.
All right.
Um, I would like to uh mention that it is getting colder out there, and if there is any money or any resources left that we can help with our recommendations from the homelessness council that we should do that. Um, we don't want to have any more deaths or loss of limbs from exposures. Um, and there is, there have been several, and I was admonished for saying that I was being hysterical, but no, people are dying on the street and people are being exposed. So um, just want to let people know that if there's anything left, that we need to um step up and do something that we said we were going to do for the past ten years and that we reiterated we're going to do again um last month. So we should do this and um consider the timing and the coldness and the freezing temperatures and the people. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or question? All right, our next council meeting will be Tuesday, November fifteenth at six P M. We also have a study session on Tuesday, November eighth at six P M. This meeting is adjourned at six forty-one P M.